This conference will now be recorded.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to call to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for June 21st, 2021. Can you call the roll, please?
Member Henigan.
President.
Member Hutchins.
Here.
Member Katsinsky.
Here.
Chair Marsh.
Here.
Let the record show that Vice Chair Carey and alternate member Dunigan are absent with notice.
Okay, please rise for the plugging. Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united in this world, with liberty and justice. At this time, do you have any public comment? See none. And we have the commission to make the motion to approve the minutes or any comments. The commission has my minutes on the minutes, so I have a few my own ones. All right, let's start on page two, it's just at the top. That the town commission town, this is spelling. And then page three, we're now calling Martin Murray, I guess. Maybe he's related. I think that was it, unless anybody else has any nearly. Thank you.
Move to approve the minutes with the changes. Chair Marsh.
A second.
All in better.
Aye.
Okay. Let me remind everybody that this is a quasi judicial procedure. And I'd like the town clerk to give me any of the items. I will pass them that.
At this time, any expertise in communication should either disclose identifying the subject of communication and the entity of the person's group or entity with whom the communication took place, or any response provided to the town clerk can make a part of the public conference in addition to each. In addition, each member of the Town of the Planning and Zoning Commission may identify the existence of any investigation or site visits he or she has conducted or any expert opinion received and disclose any conflict of interest in this matter.
Thank you. I'll ask the clerk to swear in any evidence or written.
Do you guys have any expertise in communication?
No.
No. Say no into the record if that way.
No.
For three on the case.
No.
Okay, well, anyone wishing to speak on this item, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear up from the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? When you come forward, please state your name and address clearly for the record and whether or not you've been sworn in, and please speak directly into the microphone.
Okay, the first item on the agenda on the discussion items is a development plan for three inlet key drive. Do we have any staff presentation?
Morning Chairman, Board Members. Corey, the Gorman Town Planner. This is a development plan review for a two-story, single-family home with four veterans, an office, four and one-half baths, a swimming pool, and a covered lanai. The project complies with the zoning requirements of the town of Ocean Ridge. And it really concludes our presentation. Open it up to any questions we can answer for.
Just a clarification, Corey, where it struck, the items that are struck out, that means that it's been a response?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. Building official.
Good morning Chair, Board Members. With respect to the Florida Building Code, at this time, there is not sufficient drawings with regards to mechanical, electrical plumbing. Those are usually furnished later on, but at this time, all the requirements with regards to planning and zoning have been met. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair.
I'm Tara Bamer, Town Engineer. All the drainage requirements from the code have been met with minor comments that will be adjusted.
Thank you. Okay. The afternoon presentation.
Good morning, my name is Richard Bremer. Happy Father's Day to the fathers here. My name is Richard Bremer, I'm with RWP, Lannerys Architecture. I've been sworn in. I'm going to review and discuss the new proposed single-family residence located at three inlet K Drive. The new home is replacing an existing ranch-style home of approximately 1798 AC square footage and 3255 total under roof. Existing home sits at 7.1 feet NABD. The new home will be a two-story transitional modern style with four bedrooms, four and a half baths, two-car garage, pool and pool deck, and nicely-pointed hardscape and landscape. The AC square footage of the new home will be 3,400 square feet and under roof square footage will be 4,966. Can we scroll to the site plan? That should be fine. The proposed home sits on 100 wide by 110 deep lot with the rear having a southern exposure to the water views. The house sits within the required setbacks of 15 feet to the sides and 25 feet to the front and to the rear. The finished floor elevation will sit at 10 feet NABD, which meets the FEMA flood zone height requirements. The garage will be at 6 feet NABD, and the edge of pavement, the existing pavement, is approximately 3 and 1/2 NABD. The dry slope will be approximately 6%. The pool deck will be approximately 9 and 1/2 NABD with steps down to the yard, which is 8 and 1/2 NABD, and additional steps down to the dock, which is approximately 6 feet NABD. The retaining wall to the rear and up through the sides are at 8 and 1/2 NABD. Can we go back to the rendering? The transitional modern style elevation, consistent with the new architectural styles being established in the neighborhood, but also complementing the character of the existing residential structures. It enhances the existing surroundings with the use of different forms, massing neutral colors, and the use of different cladding materials. The height and scale is sensitive to the new FEMA height requirements, trying to create a more of a human-scale approach and feel from the street to be compatible with the surrounding neighbors. There would be a straight paved drive with a paved walk with steps to the raised front entry. The front of the house, at the master bath, the office, and the garage will be consistent of one-story elements with horizontal architectural details. The raised covered entry creates interest with its raised planter and horizontal and vertical forms. The roof tile will be burrell charcoal gray mitered cement tile. There will be also wood-simulated porcelain wall tile. The neutral colors will consist of a palette of grays and whites. The doors and windows will be a bronze color. The rear of the house will have an open field. The rear of the house will have an open field with covered lanai and covered balcony areas facing the water view. There will be glass rail installed at the balconies. Overall, this new proposed home, hardscape and nicely-appointed landscaping enhances the surrounding neighbors and should be a nice addition to the Ocean Ridge streetscape. Please allow me to answer any architectural questions, and Louis from Majestic Views is here to discuss the hardscape and landscape.
Okay, the commission want to deal with the architectural first. Before going on to landscape.
Yeah, I have one question.
Sure.
You're putting retaining walls up.
Correct.
To cover the elevation. How high will they be above the neighbor's lot and the new lot? I mean, how proud will they be?
Approximately.
It's probably not much.
Two and a half feet.
I'm just curious.
It's two and a half feet.
And then on top of that, we have a four-foot fence?
Well, yeah, correct. Well, two and a half feet is.
Identify yourself.
Louis Blahos, Landscape Architect, Majestic Views. From the pool patio, which is at nine and a half, it'll be two and a half feet, but as we step down from that 18 inches, you know, all of a sudden it becomes one foot, and then as it slopes down to the neighbor's property, it's pretty much plus or minus six inches. Okay. So adjacent, it's not going to be as severe as the two and a half dimensions.
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
So you just answered a question I was going to ask. The pool deck is at nine and a half feet.
Correct.
Is that a little little artistic license there with the level of the water to the pool deck?
Well.
Where does that nine and a half feet at?
The nine and a half feet is.
As you step out.
As you step out of the house from 10, nine and a half feet is the deck and the pool coping. And then you step down three steps, 18 inches, to the grass area. And then from that grass there, you step down another two feet to the sea wall and dock. Okay. My perception then must be.
The stepping is shown on the on the site plan.
To the right and inside.
Sure, about three.
Yeah, ignore the rendering. It's on the plane, the grading is shown, the steps.
Yeah.
On the side plan.
Yeah. It was just the way that was projected. See it on the thing.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Yes. Yeah, it blended in up there. It's eight and a half where the steps come down the grass and then slopes down to seven and a half on the property line, and then the neighbor is at seven. Okay? Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments on the architecture before we go to the landscape? All right, I'll have a shot at it. Can you go back to the rendering a second? You know, I think you opened by saying this is transitional architecture. It's shy. I guess is a reasonable definition. It's just a little puzzling that you've got, you know, really quite contemporary elements just sitting on their hip roof. Find it a little odd, but you know, I can understand. And just for the sake of the commission, this kind of, let me be nice and say a hybrid approach is maybe one reason we need to start looking at flat roofs. Because everything below the E-line is much of a more contemporary flat roof.
One thing that we didn't want to do, excuse me for interrupting, but I didn't want to create more of a really heavy contemporary with flat roofs. I wanted to keep it more consistent with what was going on, but just bringing a little bit of the.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It's a very difficult thing to achieve, you know. But, and it works. The other question I have is this planking on the wood planking.
Right.
What was the reasoning? Wood is not a material that's often seen, I mean, or it's not real wood up in the center.
Sure.
But it's going to get to give the effect of wood. I'm just curious.
I just was trying to get a different tone, a different color, a different feel, you know, to the elevation. And just instead of just stark white, you know, just 100% white. I think it just feels a little bit more, you know, with the tones, the different tones, it kind of just kind of gives the elevation a little bit more of a character.
On the tones, on your graphic depiction on the coloration.
Right.
It appears that the body of the house is quite dark.
The body of the house is white and then the.
Well, it's because, unless I'm one sheet, you go to the color sample.
It's called midnight or something.
Midnight's the height.
Those are the accent colors. Main color of the exterior wall is white, the actual white. And then on the rear.
What sheet is that?
So.
Yeah. It says exterior wall paint summit gray.
Yes, so that summit gray honestly is just used in the rear elevation. We can go to the the render. So the summit gray is is on the face of the walls inside the balcony and.
And on the front as well, correct?
No, the front has nothing, there's no summit gray on the front. It's just on the inside wall.
Okay.
Everything else is white.
Because it looks like it's.
It's because of the shadows.
Okay.
Yeah, I just concerned about the next there. The other thing is my colleague, Rick is not here. On the garage, you said in your presentation that it was at six. It's actually saying seven on the.
Yeah, that's just a paper on the architectural. He had six.
But can you go to the front elevation, just the architectural or rendering? Again, you know, and I know the difficulty with trying to get the progression to get from seven to 10. But that garage element seems to be out of proportion. You've got the garage at 12 foot high. Which again is a seven-foot door.
That's actually a nine-foot door.
Can't be with that. But it seems like you could lower that area. You have that freeze below that horizontal bend onto the eve. There's no, that roof does not affect any of the interior space.
Well, what I wanted to do is to match the eve on the left-hand, I'm sorry, as you're looking at, yeah, on the left-hand side where the master bath is. Instead of having too many different levels in regards to being lights.
But I think that's what helps with this progression. So I would strongly recommend that you lower that guy a couple of feet, just to scale that down proportionally. It's not an area you want to highlight, garage. So I would suggest whoever makes a motion that we, does the rest of the commission understand that, you know, it has a abnormal height where that particular element. Okay, I think that's on the architecture. Do you want to make a presentation on landscaping?
Yes, sir. Begin to the record, my name's Louis Blahos, who just appears landscape architects. If we could just go, basically, just on an overall, we need to exceed town requirements and landscape. There was nothing existing on site that was any kind of specimen worth saving or whatever, so pretty much we had a clean slate. Excuse me. Can we go to the front elevation, please? Because it's pretty accurate. The rendering. Yes. There we go. Basically, in the front, we have the steps going from the seven elevation to nine and a half NABD. At the front entry, we have two small planters on the right. One of them has a vertical element out of media, and it's carried in between the office with the triple. And also a couple of small trees right there with the vertical, look to them, garcinias, textual plantings underneath. And then as we step down some lower planting, we just want to play with the different tiers that we have going there and not necessarily hide the building. We have two eagle-stone hollies to the right of the driveway and an acacia tree to the left, kind of breaking the look that would look all the way to the rear. And one thing that's not shown in here, which is another element, we have another tree towards the street, which is also a holly, kind of works with the other two hollies that are next to the driveway, that's basically centered with the front entry gate, so as they walk out, they're now looking straight out to the street. It's not indicated here because we were also trying to show the architectural elevation. Can we go into the rear, please? There's two privacy hedges that go from, we'll start at four to five feet, both east and west side, next to the existing adjacent properties, acacia hedges. In the rear, we kept the views open to the mangroves that are across the way. There's no other residences or that we have to worry about screening for privacy, except on the east side. And there we have a couple of ligguston trees and a triple foxdill, which is kind of centered with the pool axis that goes east and west. We have another triple foxdill on the west side and also a acacia tree. Again, we have the large hedge that's going to be maintained at six feet, and everything else around it is pretty much textural around the focal point palms, and then quite simple ficus green island and bisborm, variegated bisborm to give it a different level. On the hardscape, as you can see, we tried to minimize instead of having one height, we created two levels, one level, which is two to three steps going into the grass area. And then to make up for the sea wall height or whatever, we disguise those steps behind the pool, so they're not visible, you know, that go to the the dock area. That said, any questions?
You just mentioned ficus green, which I'm not totally familiar with.
Ficus green island, we use it quite a bit in this development. It stays small, it's about 12 to 18. It's not the big ficus invasive or anything like that, no.
Thank you for the knowledge.
What is the six-foot hedge made? The acacia?
Acacia. It's the, we use it quite a bit. It's, I expect the small leaf, just so we know. People tend to use the large leaf, which is a tree type. And the problem with that, in my opinion, is when they go to trim the hedge, you know, because it has a large leaf, the cutting starts to brown and it doesn't look as good, so use the appropriate.
Any other comments? Yeah, I mainly, and I'd just like to see a tree.
Where?
Right down. Shade tree. It's, I mean.
Well.
Acacias and liggustons, and they're really understory planting.
What is?
No, the acacia and the ligguston.
Well, the acacia actually grows quite large, the large leaf acacia, the rosea. They'll come in at around 14 foot, getting there. The other problem with the tanks and so forth, I guess we could make that a larger tree. I wouldn't have a problem with it.
I mean, you're starting from a palette that doesn't have, I mean, the lot doesn't have a tree on it.
Well, the acacia is going to be quite large. It's not as messy as, let's say, using an oak, you know, or a seagrass. Love them both, especially the seagrass is my favorite, but clients complain about the drop.
I mean, I just think, you know, I said earlier, these are really what I call understory planting, you know, trees. They're kind of mid-level. But it would be nice to have something that would develop into something, you know, pretty substantial.
I wouldn't mind recommending seagrass.
I just leave it as open for the commission, I mean.
We'll have to use a root barrier because, as you can see there, and that's why I pushed it back a little bit. So.
I'm just, this is just my personal, the rest of the commission are happy.
Because the other thing, if you notice where that's located on that side, we have the septic and the tank on the one side, and then we have a water line on the other. And it could be a potential problem in the future.
All right, it's just, I'm all for larger trees. This actually has more than bark to put in before, so if it was a small step forward, I would go bigger. I would go bigger.
It's okay. I don't have a problem doing a larger tree. I think a multi-stemming seagrass compared to the hollies, I wouldn't put a large tree on that side where the hollies are, but I think we have the capacity to do it where the acacia is and definitely use a root barrier to protect the septic and the water line. So if that's something you want to include, you'd be.
Yeah, I think it's just a recommendation. Strong suggestion. Any other?
It was really clean. Nicely done.
Thank you.
Continue that.
So I will make a motion for it.
Yeah, sorry, I thought that. Anybody in the public wish to speak?
Yes.
My name's Al Kern. I live at four M and K Drive, next door neighbor. And while I'd really like to see the redevelopment there, I do have a few issues on the retaining wall between mine and the other. There's a hedge there and a fence and everything else. And I'd like whatever ends up in there to look best for both houses. But right now, there's nothing in the drawing that says what happens there, and I'd like to get that somewhat subtle, but would make it look, because I have a large, high ficus fence all along, hedge all along that border.
So you're concerned at your existing hedge? How is that going?
Yeah, I am. I'm not in love with it, but I think we need to sit down with the landscape architect, come and see me, and we straighten out how we can make it look the best for both houses.
Yeah, because you're building a wall, retaining a wall.
Yeah. A three-foot wall beside my house, which I guess I can plant something along there to hide it, but and it's not the side of the house that I use quite a bit.
Any other concerns or?
No, not really. That's my only concern because of the wall being that close being next to us on the house.
Maybe that's the African. Landscape architect.
Can I respond to that? We have a two-foot wall that's next to the property. Right now, the existing hedge on the adjacent property to the west is a ficus overgrown, has some holes in it, correct?
That's because it hasn't been maintained on the one side.
So what we're proposing on our side, we'll still keep the hedge. I don't think we need to remove the hedge. It's not on our property. It's on inlet K. We're going to do the two-foot wall, and then on top of that is going to be a four-foot hedge, so right off the bat, he'll have a six-foot-high buffer next to his hedge. As our hedge grows, you know, consideration might be is to eliminate the ficus for a lot of reasons. Whitefly, you know, overgrowth and so forth. And that's something that you can.
I have to have it sprayed every real time.
But you can avoid that as our hedge gets higher, you know, you can use that as your hedge.
Are you going to leave my existing fence in there? There's a fence along there.
Well, we're proposing a new four-foot fence on top of the two-foot wall, an aluminum fence. So if you feel that your fence, that we need two fences, it's on your property.
Two fences. I just want to know what the best way to do it is. It's the Ficus has thrown so much in that.
The thing is, it's really, it's on your property. The survey doesn't show it on ours. So we're not planning on removing your hedge.
Let me interrupt. I don't think it's appropriate for both of you. Can I recommend that you meet both parties?
That's what I would like to have.
It sounds like you'd like to preserve a barrier. And I think what I'm hearing is the applicant is going to provide a barrier, but it needs to be moderated between both of you as to.
I.
So I think your concern is understood. I think I'm hoping the applicant is sympathetic to what you're concerned.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay.
I would recommend that that meeting happened with Steve Vargas. So he's aware if they make a decision to remove fences or cut down. It's done with the developer and exclude me as the middleman.
Well, you may need to do.
We're already showing the buffer on our plans.
So it's, the illness is on you. You've had a concern by the neighbors. So we appreciate you addressing that. Okay, with that, do we have any more?
Just one question, if I could. You have issue with the garage look? And you're suggesting that it might look better and maybe I even agree it was lowered a bit. That doesn't, and it won't, wouldn't contribute to any inconsistency of a symmetrical design. Not much, but I'm trying to keep it.
No, I think it's just that the garage should not be such a prominent. I think the architect understands.
Okay. You know what, the place pretty much, but I understand.
No, I think it's fine. It's just, it's just a proportional thing. It's a formistic carry.
So then I will make a motion to approve the plans as submitted with consideration towards lowering the tie beam and roof line of the garage element with a larger tree as in a shade tree for the front. And then, of course, meeting with the neighbors to accommodate their concerns with the buffer.
I'll second that.
Hold on a favor.
I.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Before we move on, I just want to welcome Ben. Taking business based places. Thanks. Okay. We are open for the flat roof. The post flat roof. Carla, will you give us our?
Yes, so let me just give you a brief overview. Mr. Hutchins came to the town commission meeting and gave a presentation regarding your discussions at your last K Z meeting. And the town commission agreed that the flat roof issue needs to be looked into. So they placed the ball back in your court. And Durani has issued a memo for you in conjunction with Carla. And we're kind of now looking for direction on what you would like to see. And then we will run with it and bring something back to you.
Okay.
I believe member Carrie has a comment that he would like to share with you all. So Carla can read that. So yes, the vice chair Carrie wrote a memo in which he stated, planning and zoning commission. I am supportive of many of the town code to allow flat roof residential construction in Ocean Ridge. I have listed below several conditions which I recommend that you make a part of the code allowing flat roofs. One, the overall building height remain the same as the current code, which I believe is a maximum of thirty-six feet of thirty-six inches of parapet above the tie beam. Two, the parapet must extend around all sides and fully conceal all rooftop equipment and any other building extension, including sloping roofs located behind the parapet. Three, no rooftop equipment should be allowed on a one-story portion of flat roof, including a house that's entirely one-story because of the potential unattractive view from adjoining two-story homes. Four, patio decks or any other type of recreational slash living space should not be allowed on the roof. This has become an issue in Delray Beach. We must make our code crystal clear that the roof is the roof, period. As further reinforcement, I recommend the code for any form of internal access to the roof and no external ways to the roof. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
May I ask a question? I would agree with most everything that Rick said in that. What is the history or what is the reason why we didn't allow flat roofs and that we did this four to 12 or four, whatever it was? Was there something more significant that I don't understand?
I can only say that it was kind of an informal policy that these coastal towns had. That, you know, I think our pitch group was far more indicative of a residential structure.
Okay.
And might have been, for example, Gulfstream still denies flat roofs.
Mark, didn't this, didn't this occur in an era where maybe even a majority of the homes were one-story?
Yeah, they were ranch homes.
So one-story flat roof houses dramatically different.
Yes.
Yeah. And again, just history, I've been here since seventy-eight. And as an architect, you never got a, anybody requesting or relatives would never suggest a two-story house. Because traditionally, majority of houses were one-story for, I guess, the elder age of the residents. And so I think that has part of it as well.
I think I have a memory of the flat roof and when it became unpopular in Ocean Ridge. On Harper Drive South, a home was built with a flat roof. It had very high ceilings inside and did not appeal to some of the neighbors. And it just had the wraparound top. You can see it. It looks okay now, but it would, it struck people, oh, we don't like that. And I think that that was the driver came to the town and that's where we came up with fifteen percent.
Yeah, that's a good point of reference.
I, nobody's here to defend themselves, but that's my.
No, I think it's, yeah. And as I said, historically, it just was not a design that was accepted in most communities at the time.
Well, and clearly the product is better. You know, the technology has gotten better with flat roofs because they didn't drain properly.
And where I personally, I agree, I think wholeheartedly with what Rick has laid out there. Those are all the points I, especially the access to the roof. I think that's, that's the most critical one. You know, because for years, this four and twelve hidden behind the parapet has been just total.
Abandoned.
It's, it's, it's a joke. It's really.
It actually ends up costing the resident more money to do it that way.
Yeah, I mean, it's really, you know, call it what it is. So I think the time has come. You know, there is a much more contemporary mode now currently in the residential industry or architecture. And I think we just need to be ahead of it. And so I think.
I'd like to add to that, at least no generators on.
Yeah, I think that's, we can define once.
So I think the biggest task is language, correct?
Correct. And it's something that we don't want to jump into without really going researching and mulling over. So I don't think it's something that we're going to adopt in, you know, hopefully we'll adopt it by the end of the year, but I think it's not going to be quick.
May I ask staff, your opinion of the, I mean, I know you wrote the memo, but is there, based on what Mr. Care, I'm sorry, not Mr. Care, what member Carrie wrote, is there anything in addition that you can think of that should be added to that?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So not having a step, a access, especially in a three-story, a two-story structure, where we are going to allow equipment on the roof is a violation. You need to have means of access to any equipment on the roof.
Yeah.
Single story, not so much because a ladder, you know, is available, but it hides a two-story. So just based, that's the only thing. In terms of a generator not being on the roof.
Correct there. Sorry. I don't think you can, as long as you can get a ladder or a crane. There's nothing, I've not heard of any ordinance that, that says or states that you have to provide an internal access.
I have to get back to you on that one. There's something I'm thinking of above twenty-four meters that a.
Yeah, I agree. I just, I just don't want, my defense of that or my statement.
Yeah.
Is I don't want to create a loophole.
Right, understood. So, and also with regards to generators on the roof, again, I mean, there's, it is considered equipment.
It is what?
It is considered normal equipment. So.
But it's not essentially.
Right. So I mean, it's, obviously, it's up to the pleasure of the commission to define the use of what we can or not allow on the roof.
The ordinance is.
Right.
So.
What's the issue?
So I mean, so if we didn't have the equipment on the roof, then there would be no need for stairs, just based on.
Because the muffler noise of the generator at that level or elevated level is going to be much more difficult than on great. The transmission of.
Yeah, but you still have to exhaust the fumes. If you have it down on the ground, it's got to.
It's not a fume thing. It's more of a sound.
And you don't think that the three-foot retaining wall would?
As it will dissipate. I bet my building official friend will explain the physics.
Just, yes, if you did have some barrier, it would reduce it. And the question is how much noise? Most generators are about seventy decibels, which is, you know, pretty much, you know, a old Ford engine. So it depends again on, you know, the pleasure of the commission, how do guys would want to restrict noise levels as.
I think that might be something we need to research.
There's also issues of vibration in the structure.
I wouldn't want mine up there.
Yeah, I mean, so there's, you don't even see them on commercial buildings. You know, most generators are ground supported. But no, good question. I think we just, these are the things we have.
I mean, right off the bat, I like the three-foot parapet.
Well, that's, that's critical.
Right.
The screen.
So that would, that's probably something we can agree on right anybody.
Well, I don't know, Tracy, where do we want to go with this? I mean, we're just kind of.
Just give us general direction on how, what you want us to research and bring back to you. I think we have the general direction, I think.
I think I would, I'd like to just pull, take a vote. Or this commission supports, Commissioner Kerry's support for flat roofs. We.
Is there any other town that you may want to see their code that you're thinking of specifically? We can also pull that up.
I was going to come back and ask Cory to just do a little more research because I think like, you know, we've done with other issues in the past. I think we need to see what other communities are doing.
Yeah, I think we really need to look at Delray Beach too, because if they're having problems right now, we want to look and see what their code says so we can avoid those same problems.
No generators, no.
Yeah.
But let's do it from the perspective that this is where we're going.
Sorry, I just want to be clear. So can I? My question is, are we all in favor of this? You don't have to vote, but I just want to know that there's no dissent.
The, the access to the roof is something that I think we should look at. I know we don't want to have parties.
Sorry, I'm just talking about the concept of allowing flat roofs. That's, I just want to. So we're all in the group. Yeah. Sorry, I wanted to get over that.
That's why I say do the research from the perspective that that's where we're going. If we have a consensus that we're going to allow flat roofs, then let's do the research to make it as tidy and no loopholes and no recreational activity. And all of that, it just needs to be more beneficial for our homeowners that are trying to build the house that they want.
Are you all leaning towards just increasing the percentage of flat roof or complete flat roofs?
Complete flat roofs. I was just, you took the words there because I don't think we want to encourage what I mentioned earlier, hybrid. It's a style. Let it be true to the style. Right? We as architects try to do crazy things. Not like my pilot friends here. So I think, again, if and when we could have this workshop, this is something that I think is, should be, again, discussed in open forums between commission.
That will be scheduled in October. We were having a lot of difficulty trying to get everyone together in the summer. So the town commission directed us to set something up for October. Carla will get with everybody to find out what the best date will be, but working with all people, so it's difficult to give a planned schedule.
Okay, well, I think this is a step in the right direction. Geodetic stones are the next.
Got one out there. Trees.
Let's miss the poll, we'll be back.
Yeah, you'll be back.
Chair Hirsch, you mentioned that you'd like this, for this item to be a joint workshop. Are you guys going to discuss it one more time, once we do a little bit more research?
As I said earlier, I would really like for, if you could, to, you know, compare or get some information out of the communities. I mean, from, and I keep it more of a coastal community. I think we're, we're unique. Palm Beach has ordinance addressing that. And let's keep Boca out of it. In Delray. Yeah, we need to see what the.
We can do that.
All right. So is that, take care of that issue or that subject?
General.
Oh, all right. Public comments? Wonder what you're here for. Hello there.
I was the.
Just say your name.
Oh, sorry. Renee Alonso. I'm General Contractor Alonso and Associates. We are about to start at home here on ninety-five mile and drive. And hence, I am here. I, we withdrew the application because we were told that we were not going to get really a hard answer. What I'm here for is to see how I can mitigate this thing that we just discussed with this house because it's a, it is a house that appears from the outside to have a flat roof. But on the inside, it's this convoluted pitch roof, which I've told the owner and the architect both that, in my opinion, you know, I've been building now for forty-two years, that I'm going to be called back quite a bit to fix leaks in this roof because I just don't see how, the way that the roof was designed, how it even makes any sense. I mean, it certainly will, will drain if everything works perfectly. In fact, on this particular house, it drains from the parapet in and then.
Um, it drains from the parapet in, and then you have the pitch roof in in the center. And so you have several drains around there, which if those drains were to clog during a storm, you'd start filling up with water and no nowhere to go, nowhere to go. Uh, because there were no. Uh, scuppers, overflow scuppers. So I had proposed, uh, a. Flat roof. Inside the parapet. You know, doesn't change the appearance of the house whatsoever. Uh, that, you know, I could stand behind. And so I know it's a one-off now at at this point, because you you all haven't, um. For your discussion today, it may be the end of the year, but I wanted to see if I could, um. You know. Get some consensus and maybe, um, submit for, I guess at this point would be a variance. Uh, with everyone's support.
Man, that's why you're here.
Like, you can't, you can't pre-commit to variance, but I think this on those hearing. She, the sense of the, the. Board that you're going to be moving to allow flat roofs. It may not occur until sometime after October. So my best suggestion would be to. Guessing that your client doesn't want to wait that long to build their house.
He's an, he's anxious to start, and again, you know, listen, can the house be built the way it is? Yes, was it prudent? Not really, I mean, I don't think it's a, it's a good design, and. And I think, um, you know, my interest, my, I am, you know, I have a fiduciary responsibility to to him as his builder. Uh, and I, you know, I said, listen, I'll go before the board, the architect, I talked to the architect, and she, uh. She agreed, but didn't offer to, you know, come here, so, uh, I said I I'd go on his behalf, so.
I think the only obstacle is proving a hardship on a variance.
Now, that's, that's going to be.
That's the issue, I think.
That's my, another hot tub, special exception, we got to get there at some point, not getting the variances.
Do we necessarily have to wait for the joint workshop, can we every month move this thing a little bit quicker and send it to the?
It's called zoning of progress, which means it freezes everything to what is current.
I mean, you could be creative, you 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 could, if you want, allow it because there's plans, and you could look at the plans, and that could be your template for your new. Vision, or you could look at that and say, here are the halls in this, but you're going to be designing a new. Code section to deal with flat roofs, and you've got a gentleman who's got fear in his flat roof, he may. At least give you a sense of that, the direction you want to go or not, but.
If you have parapet, all scupper drainage. Then you took out the flat roof drains that were in the flat roof, or in addition to, had both, are you comfortable with the water issue? Safety on the roof? Um. In, I I don't have the, the, I I have my drawing, you know, my drawing, drawing that I suggested to her with me, I don't have the the old drawing, unfortunately, they didn't put it in my packet here that they brought. But, um. I think the problem with the way that the roof was designed, if you can picture all the way around this house. Coming in, you know, say like eight feet, and then everything in the middle going back up to a peak, so you have the four, four foot, you know, the four and twelve and the four and twelve.
Right, but what if, but what if it was the four twelve, it then flat to the, to the parapet and then?
Right, but but I think what she was trying to.
Tons of roofs in.
Sure, and and I, and I, I I agree with that, the only thing with that is that it made. Them that peak higher. She tried to mitigate the height of the peak by bringing it in from the sides and then bringing it back in into to the middle. So by bringing it in from the sides, starting, you know, a flat roof and then coming up, it makes it a higher peak, so you can see it from the street. Where this, you know, the way she drew it, you wouldn't see it from the street.
Can I ask from our perspective, if it were a flat roof, it were, if it were designed to a typical flat roof with a thirty-six-inch parapet? Would the house be any shorter overall than it is as designed now?
No, and and by the way, the thirty-six-inch parapet, I don't, I don't understand that, the logic behind that, because you're not hiding anything.
No, if you do have rooftop equipment.
Oh, if you do, but if you don't.
You know, I mean, that's, that's for.
Right.
It has to be universal.
Can I show you this?
Well, let me, let me, the the problem I see with. You won't be able to prove a hardship, because even on that slope central.
No, I don't get that.
You can do up slope scuppers.
Right.
Then two inches above for that. You know, for the emergency.
Sure.
So technically, you're, you'll be challenged with that.
Yes.
Chair Marsh, Carla has a comment. Yeah, so Chair Marsh, I mean, you're going to try to go over the variance again, I don't know how much of a hardship, but it's a completely different board that you'll be going in front of. Um, but one of the things that. The building official and I discussed, you know, depending on when it gets adopted, maybe by October or so forth. I mean, you still at that time, if it gets adopted around October, November, still be able. To revise your plans. At that time, and and then be able to do that flat roof at that time, once the the code is changed, I don't, again, I don't know how long that will take. But if your project is still in process, you will still be able to revise it and then be able, I just, again, we just don't know when the code will take place.
I personally would hate to have a variance even be discussed on this subject. Worse approved.
It's such a can of worms.
Yeah, I I did, that I would fight against. All right, I mean, Renee, it's, it's, the timing is what's working against you here, we're trying to move in that direction. Um, but. I mean, there's some logic to what you said, you can slow the construction happen, modify the the documentation, satisfy. The guy over there, but, uh. I just, I think it's dangerous to contemplate an interim situation. You know, I mean, interpretation.
Well, I mean, it's just a shame, uh, to to build something that, um.
No.
I mean, aesthetically, the house is beautiful and 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 the, uh. You know, aesthetically, there is no change, you know, whatsoever. So, you know, it's just a, a method, you know, a a method of removing water from the roof. Uh, the the aesthetic, as you said, you know, the reasons why these things were, and I've been building since seventy-eight myself. And and, uh. It it's, uh. It was. Flat roofs at that time, they weren't popular, and people didn't like them, they didn't want to move into a community, a beautiful community like this to see a bunch of flat roofs, because they were cheap, that's what they were. You know, it was a cheap method of construction. So. Anyway, uh, I I strongly, you know, uh.
I I I think you're, you're on the right track, and timing is what's working against you. It sounds silly, I put the flat roof as a. In. And build a, it's just. And then it can be removed, if you get to that stage.
When is that plan coming before us? Ninety-five by one drive?
Already.
It was approved with the, um, the pitch roof, so now they want the flat roof, but because they want that change.
Gotcha.
It has to come back, but technically you can't approve it at this time, because it'd be a.
If I had a request, I'd like to see what staff develops. And work on it next month, and if there's things that we like, we say this is what we like. And then we can move it on to the commission, I I I think. You know, patience is is a virtue, except.
I don't think we need to wait till October.
No.
Get this huge package to start.
No, no.
Let's tell the staff we're going to try our best to come up with some, because we've agreed that we like the concept, we just aren't certain how, how we're going to do it, so. Let's see what staff does, and then next month, we can move a little bit far.
I mean, the town, the the town survey assessment, I I think. Is going to be important from a time, time limit.
So is there consensus to have staff review flat roofs in regards to other communities and equipments and so forth?
Yeah, I I agree, I agree, David, I mean, we're not trying to delay this, I just think it's something we have to really get.
Get right.
Get right.
Man, in our case, we have no equipment on the roof, zero. Uh, and certainly no, we don't need any access, because we have a, we can put a ladder from a second-floor balcony. To go upstairs, so there's no, uh, none of those issues would would be, uh. You know, part of this, so.
Yeah, you need to get access up there just for me.
Center.
But not for recreation?
Yeah. All right, thanks, Renee.
All right. Thank you.
Um. Any commission?
If I come up with a hardship.
Yeah.
Something creative.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to go for it.
All right. I figured that. Um, any other commission?
Yeah, I. Discussion. I keep seeing these houses, to me, they're, we're starting to get into this. I think you drew it, alluded to it once before, this. Now, now we've got this modern style, we're starting to get this copycat syndrome. This barn wood. Same color. Horizontal tiles or whatever. Very similar structures, features, this one had a hip roof on the garage, the other, this, his house had, uh, flat roof. Um, but but the horizontal elements and the styling, um. You know, we're starting. You know, ocean regions are eclectic. And I don't want to see every third house look like this bar house.
I don't care, it's somebody's choice.
I understand, I I personal opinion.
Right.
Okay.
And same here.
Correct. And.
The darts haven't hit you yet.
You know, do we, do we, do we want to see that somebody built a left-hand version of the right-hand house, four houses away? Um, yeah, it's, it's, well, in all fairness to David, I don't think we want to become one of these communities, like gated communities. I think everything starts to cookie cutter. Repetitive stuff, and I think. You know. Ocean Ridge is blessed with bigger lots. Than most of these other coastal communities. And we should be encouraging some personal or, you know, some variation in the character, you know, eclectic, but in the right style. The trouble is, this is, I was going to say, but I didn't want to say to the architect is. This is going to be. Our children's or grandchildren's generation that said, what the heck? Like what we talked about in the sixties, you know, the stuff that we saw in the sixties. This is going to be another one of those cyclical things, what the heck went wrong in the two thousands? You know, in fairness to you, it's a personal choice. Uh, if somebody really likes that stuff and then wanted to, I think our job is to kind of make sure that they're not. Being repeated either in close proximity or worse, on the same street, I think that's the the fear. I don't think we can blanket why. Discourage a stop, I mean, that's why we're here, and that's why. I was trying to start this commission. With more architectural review. To try to. You know, be able to talk to the applicants and the owners and say, look. Joe, Joe Blow down the street has almost identical house. Yeah. I mean, I wanted to comment, I wanted to comment on the, on the brown you commented on.
Yeah, that that just has no place.
I mean, a new house coming up on my street, it had gray. The person moved in, within a year, they took the gray off of the new house and now have brown. So, that's, that's to your things, what the homeowner wants.
And in honesty, I'm not crazy about flat roofs, but other people are, I I prefer a pitched roof, I think.
I would never do one, this is a truck.
But no.
It rains five inches of rain, you're going to get.
I just, I like to have, because this is high, expensive real estate, people should be able to do what they want.
Well, to a, to a, to a point, I, I'm not, I I'm not taking the issue of flat roof, I'm not taking the issue of. Glass panel garage doors, I'm not taking the issue of the horizontal brown siding, I'm taking issue to when you put all four or five of these features on the. The similarity. You put all of them on a house, and, okay, so this next one, you change the E. Symmetry, or you change, uh, put a gray. Number seven or an L on the garage to break up the eye field, but the. The similarity is still there.
I get it.
Just like Gulfstream, Gulfstream requires a white roof, right?
Well, no, they do, and I.
They've got two styles, Bermuda style or the.
But that's basically every third house is, but we're not Gulfstream, and I don't think our commission.
David's, go and sit at our com meeting in Palm Beach. And. The values in the dirt, of course. And that town, through that commission, will tell you basically what you can and can't. And we're talking mega dollars. So. There is a point for town, I think it's personally overwhelmed there, I think they've overreached. But I think it's necessary for, you know, what Neil's saying, to stop the repetitiveness of.
Yeah, we don't want to look like a housing development.
Right, right.
Property values.
So, so all I'm asking you, Dave, is, you know, what number or where, where would it bother you that there's too much of the sameness? Or are you okay with all sameness?
I would just say, let's see what happens, because.
Well, I, I think we're seeing it.
People end up knocking down something, it's, it's, it's the dirt.
Well, I I I just asked this commission, we're charged with. That review, we see something that's so similar to something within that. Street or that neighborhood. It's us, our duty to at least let the applicant or the owner, you know, where.
My warning, lights flashing already, so.
No, I mean, and we can't dictate what's said, but we we consciousness must, you know, relay and say, you know, this house is two stories down. The end of, uh, Hudson's my street, I've got two houses that are book matched across the street.
And then you've got the one at the end of Hudson, it's just like the new one that's at the end of Ocean.
Right, so, yeah, and it's partly because, and I hate to say speculative aspect of which is. You know, now involved in Ocean Ridge, because Delray is too expensive, Manalapan is too expensive. So we're the target, and that's why we're here, almost. Is to try not to mandate what you can and can't build, is to at least make sure that it it's keeping the character. And the the quality of what the towns. But, you know, I, your point is, is right on the money, you don't want to dictate what somebody can.
It's a.
But it's not, it's, it's, it's a consciousness that we have to.
Threading a needle, it's difficult.
I know. Libertarian, I don't know. Anyway, that's good, that's a good, good, no, good point, I think it's good discussion, I think we just need to hopefully all stay on the same page.
We'll all stay.
I'm not going to blow off reservation yet.
All right.
So then you need to do something to save, ask the staff, the, the board?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, motion to adjourn.
In for a new adjourn, um, is there anybody that wants to report for July, the town commission and vice chair Kerry is not in town?
I'm.
I'm not here.
You'll do it? I'll come and watch. Great. It's there.
It's there.
Now motion to adjourn.
Thanks.
All in favor?
I.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Ken, for.
Thanks, Mark.
July, the.
Yeah.
My pleading for piercing.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Neil, are you going, uh, are you going anywhere, Bishop?
I was going to go today, but I, you know, I have a problem with my boat, I've, I've got a.